The airport. We will go as far as we need to to help fill the positions that are that are open.
Of course, Lawa operates four different airports. Is this just for LAX?
The First Source Hiring Program, yes, is just for LAX.
What kinds of jobs are available? What kinds of companies are involved?
Well, we have about 300 vendors on airport. And I will say this, no matter what the job title for the position, customer service is number one at the airport. That's very, very important. But we have jobs that are primarily customer service, accounting jobs, a number of positions that are that are available at the airport.
And of course, you mentioned during the council meeting, work source centers. What are these centers? Where are they located? And what's the process when somebody interested in employment shows up at one of the centers?
Well, the work source centers are our partners. That is the means through which we're able to fill the open positions with the with the employers on airport. And what happens is someone, an interested candidate can go to the work source center to get information about jobs at the airport, as well as come into the Business and Job Resources Center. When we receive information about positions from the employers on airport, we we send that information out to our network of work source centers, employment development agencies, and tell them about the open position, and then they refer candidates back to us. And we refer those candidates to the to the employers.
Well, you mentioned a couple of ways of getting the word out. What other kinds of outreach programs do you have to make sure that the right people know about the right programs?
Well, we do work with community and faith-based organizations, the state employment development departments. We've even started working with the Veterans Agency. So we work with a number of employment agencies to help us get the word out about the program, as well as we do have the Business and Job Resources Center, at which people can get information directly about the about the positions.
No doubt there will be Los Angelinos who might be eligible for the First Source Hiring Program, but maybe just lack the skills needed for certain positions that are happen to be available. Is there a training component involved in this at all?
Well, one of the other benefits under the Community Benefits Agreement is the job training program. However, that program has not yet been approved by the FAA. It's still under discussion. As a result, but we do work with outside partners for job training. So if someone does not have the skills, we look to one of our other partners to help train them.
Certainly, some applicants may need help writing a resume. If you've ever been in a hiring position, you know what that's like. Or maybe they have trouble simply filling out the application. Will they be offered help in those areas as well?
Yes. As a matter of fact, through our work source centers, the employees are the the applicants are able to get help with with resumes and with some of these soft skills that may be needed to help polish them for positions.
Is the First Source Hiring Program a standalone program, or do you have relationships maybe with other job programs involved throughout the city?
Actually, the First Source Hiring Program is in itself a standalone program. However, the Business and Job Resources Center does partner with a number of other programs. We actually work with work source centers. We work with a number of agencies to to provide information about jobs. So we we would like to look at this as as a resource to the community about the jobs and opportunities at the airport.
If somebody happened to see you testifying before council or here on Council Week in Review, they might think you're just some do-gooder who thought this was a great idea and showed up and volunteered to help. You've been working hard for the city for a long time in a variety of capacities, haven't you?
I certainly have. I've been working for the City of Los Angeles for 17 years now. Prior to this, in the city administrative office and with the airport for about five years now.
And one of the other things that I know you've been doing at the airport is you've been seeing it as a tremendous, underutilized resource for the employment engine of the City of Los Angeles and for the region. Some of your programs for employment opportunities go back many, many years. What have you done? And how successful has it been?
Well, the airport is a major economic engine in the region. And I think what's very inspiring to me is that the airport has taken the time to work with the community to find a means to get people around the airport to take advantage of the airport jobs, about the opportunities on the airport. And after 9/11, when there was a there was the downturn, we looked at how to help people at the airport get jobs outside of the airport. So we're able to, we're flexible. We're looking to help people regardless of what the circumstances are.
And of course, part and parcel with that industry is the aerospace industry in Southern California. And so many thousands of people have been displaced from that industry over, I guess, about the last 15 years or so.
That's that's correct. And so we, there are a number of very talented workers who are able to transfer the skill sets that they've learned in one particular job and transfer them to another to another position. And that's what we look at. We look at the kind of skill sets that people have, and we look at the transferable skills, and we provide assistance in those areas.
We also know that as a society, we are turning out more and more ex-offenders and putting them back out to try to get back into the workforce. And I know that's an area that you are particularly concerned about and sensitive about.
We are sensitive to the to the area of of ex-offenders, and we try to help as much as possible. However, as you're also aware, at the airport, there are very strict security concerns. And so we have to, one of the things that we do is prescreen and prequalify the applicants because in accordance with the regulations for security, there are certain, certain, certain requirements. And so we have to make sure that those are fulfilled. However, for jobs that do not have the high security requirement, we do look for ways to help help people in those positions.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was getting at. Would these typically be jobs that might not actually be within the confines of airport property, that might be in satellite areas that are adjacent to and feed the airport?
That's correct. Those are the types of jobs that that anything, the jobs that are off-airport typically are the ones that are more available to to people who's with those with those conditions, yes.
Are there any other particular populations that you are looking for that you think might be particularly helped by a program like this?
Well, we we hope to help as many people as possible. In under the Community Benefits Agreement, there are, the goal is, and again, when the job training program is set up or when we're able to finally set up a job training program, we're hoping to extend the the number of people that we're able to assist, perhaps those who have barriers to employment, such as transportation. And again, working with partners, we're able to help people who may not have the transportation to get to the airport achieve those means.
I think you said a little while ago that the program has been in its opening stages for a little less than a year now. Do you have a track record yet that you you know how this is going to go and how many jobs you might be able to provide, how many people you can help?
Well, there are a couple of, there are a couple of answers to that. One is we started with one employer in December, and now we've grown to about 40 employee and 40 employers with whom we're working on airports. There are about 300 employers altogether. And one of the things that we're looking at is we're hiring a consultant to help us talk with the employers on airport, to look at ways, the best ways to get information out, to get information from them, as well as to get applicants to them. We're looking for the most efficient means to do that. And we want the employers on airport to participate in this process so that we can come up with a process that everyone is willing to work with. And that's that's really a benefit to all, both the employers, as well as the prospective employees.
By the way, how have the prospective employers taken to this program? Is almost everybody saying that's a great idea? Count me in?
Well, for the ones with whom we've begun to work, they have recognized it as a benefit. In fact, they know that we're sending them prescreened and pre-qualified candidates, and therefore, they prefer to look at the candidates that we send them rather than candidates they may get from other means, which are not prescreened and pre-qualified. So for those companies with whom we have begun to work already, they recognize the benefit, and they talk to other companies, and so the number has grown. I think there may be some initial resistance for the companies who are not familiar with the program, only because they're not yet familiar with it. But this is one of the things that we'd like to do. Take the time to talk with the employers, help them understand that we are providing a benefit to them, to fill their positions. So we want to know exactly what the positions are, what the characteristics are they're looking for. And then we want to work with our partners, the work source centers, because the candidates are available. The candidates are there, willing to work. So we want to provide that perfect match for the employers, as well as the prospective employees.
Well, if the last few minutes are any indication, you are a terrific ambassador for First Source. Let's get to the most important question, perhaps, of the entire program. How can our Channel 35 viewers get more information? Who do they call? Is there a website?
Well, I'll give you the phone number. The phone number is area code 310-417-6490. That is the phone number to the Business and Job Resources Center at Los Angeles World Airports. And actually, we're located at 6151 Century Boulevard. It's very easily accessible, and you do not have to go through any security requirements to get to that to our building. However, our website is, at this point, under construction. We are working on getting one up and running very soon. And we know that that will be a big help to us in terms of getting information to people about this program.
And the director of the program is Joyce Sloss. Ms. Sloss, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure to be with you.
And remember, you may also dial 311 for additional information on the First Source Hiring Program or information on any city program or service. 311 is your one call to City Hall. LA City View is the government access cable channel for the City of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at 213-473-3978. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending September 14, 2007. On behalf of William Kidston and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
In the city of Los Angeles, when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
Hey, John, lower the gun, buddy. John, leave the gun.
Working as a team.
Go ahead and put the gun down. John, nobody's going to come at you, all right? But I'd feel a whole lot better if you were to lower that gun.
To protect and to serve.
Why don't you come back here to me, all right? All right, that's good. Walk toward me with your hands up, John.
Put your hand up.
All units, go force a six.
Thanks for working with me.
2910, show me code six. Send the article search for the Amber Alert.
To fight crime and to keep our streets safe.
Another positive hit on this bag.
We believe at this time that the vehicle is in our custody.
Any available unit to respond to the northeast corner, 7th and 12th, toward the Amber Alert.
682, the 53rd.
Hold it, call.
1411, show us responding.
Take a good look around.
This is it. Go.
For the officers of the LAPD, it's all in a day's work. Protecting our families.
Look at your daddy.
They take pride in what they do.
Call from the Amber Alert. Missing child found in return to parent. Suspect in custody.
LAPD is hiring. Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
... Garcetti and I am joined by my colleagues Tony Cardenas, Janice Hahn, Tom Labonge, Jan Perry, and Dennis Zine. We want to thank them for being here on time pursuant to council rules. We are awaiting those council members that are now late. Councilmember Alarcon, Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Wezar, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. It is now past the hour and you are expected in chambers if you will come down as soon as possible. Councilmember Smith is excused today on city business, but otherwise we are expecting fourteen members. As soon as we have two-thirds of our fifteen-member body, that will constitute a quorum and we can begin official business. In the meantime, let me announce a few things for the benefit of the public. First of all, we are broadcast live on the city's cable system through Channel thirty-five on Time Warner System. We are also available to be viewed in the evening on rebroadcast through that same system. We're also available online through webcast, which is live at our city's homepage, lacity.org. And we have video on demand, which allows you to go to that same homepage and pull down archived video footage of all of our council meetings. And you can view past agendas and click on items of interest to you and watch the council proceedings on those matters. Finally, you can always listen into council phone by using council phone, which is two-one-three-six-two-one city. That's two-one-three-six-two-one city, an audio service of the Information Technology Agency that allows you to listen along to not just the council meeting, but any of our committee meetings as well. We invite members of the public to read our agendas online. They're posted there seventy-two hours in advance or twenty-four hours in advance if there are special items. Those also are available live in person here in council chambers or also through the city clerk's office. We finally invite folks to fill out public speaker cards on the agendas for items that have not yet received a public hearing. And you can do that either here in person in City Hall or in Van Nuys City Hall, where we are able to teleconference you in and watch you via video conference. If you'll fill out those speaker cards and please hand them to the sergeants-at-arms at either side of the chambers, we'll make sure that your public speaker cards are heard. Speakers are permitted on items that have been agendized, up to six total minutes of public comment each meeting. And we have a clock to help guide the speakers there on the podium and the podium in Van Nuys. Speaking of Van Nuys, we meet the first Friday of the month in Van Nuys City Hall in our efforts to bring city council closer to all Angelenos. We'll soon be doing that as well in the Harbor area. And lastly, we have general public comment, which is for items that are not on the agenda but are nevertheless under the city council's jurisdiction. And if you'd like to be heard for two minutes of general public comment, please fill out one of those same speaker cards and just mark it "public comment" in the upper right corner and hand that to one of the guards. We have councilmembers Cardenas, Hahn, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Rosendahl, and Zine now with us, constituting eight members. So, Mr. Alarcon, nine members. So, we're waiting for one of the following members who are late. Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Wezar, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. It is now well past the hour, which we are pursuing to our own council rules required to be here in our seats, so please come down as soon as possible. Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Wezar, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Weiss, or Councilmember Wesson. We appreciate the audience's patience, and as soon as we have one more member, that will constitute a quorum and we will begin the meeting. So, sit tight, and we expect to begin momentarily. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Wezar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, eleven members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes?
Mr. Reyes moves and Mr. Zine seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rosendahl moves, Mr. Wesson seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved. Next order of business.
Mr. President, would you like to go through public comments right now?
I do not have any public comment cards yet, so why don't we hold on that? Oh, we have some that are coming, so let's run through the agenda first while we're awaiting those cards. First items, please.
Mr. President, we have some requests you consider. There's a request to continue item twenty-three to September twenty-fifth.
Okay. Is there any objection, colleagues? This is item twenty-three, a continuance till the twenty-fifth of this month. Seeing no objections, so ordered. Next item?
There is also a request to continue item number twenty-six to October tenth.
Okay, is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing item number twenty-six till the tenth of October? Seeing no objections, that too will be ordered. Next item?
Next are items number one through seven. Those are items noted for public hearing. Building and safety requests to receive and file out item number one inasmuch as the lien has been paid.
Okay. We will move that on item one. Any specials on these, colleagues? If not, we will open and close the public hearings. I just want to make sure we don't have any from one through seven?
No.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open and close the public hearings on those. And if we can, I believe on item seven, we need a motion. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Ms. Perry, item seven is in your district. It's a public convenience of necessity, which requires a motion for the Grand Avenue project, I believe. Just move that. Okay, I will second that. Go ahead and please open the roll on the balance or all the items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next are items number eight through twenty-three, with the exception of number twenty-three, and those are items for which public hearings have been held. Items number eight and nine are confirmations to city officials. Would you like to hold these on the desk?
Let's please hold eight and nine on the desk. And colleagues, that leaves ten through twenty-two. Specials, Ms. Perry?
Twenty.
Twenty for Ms. Perry. Mr. Parks?
Ten, we're waiting for some information. Just hold it.
Sorry, number ten?
We're waiting for some information.
Okay, we'll hold that for Mr. Parks. Other specials, colleagues? We have eleven through nineteen, twenty-one and twenty-two.
Mr. President, which item was that one?
Number ten, Mr. Parks wanted to hold on the desk, and twenty for Ms. Perry. Any other special items? Let's hold the ordinances as well. We are expecting twelve members, so let's hold eleven, twelve, and thirteen on the desk.
Mr. President, item number nine, the commissioner will not be present. That can be voted on right now.
Okay. Mr. Reyes, are you in accordance with that? The commissioner on number nine for the Harbor Area Planning Commission will not -- is not expected here today? Do you want to hold that or do you want to move that along today?
Yes.
It's okay to move along?
Yes.
Okay, we'll put that on the consent calendar then. If we can put nine, do not hold that special anymore, please. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, if we can, please take up the balance, prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. And Mr. Weiss is now here. If we can take up items eleven, twelve, and thirteen as ordinances, now we have twelve members. Nobody wishes to call those special? If we can open the roll on eleven, twelve, and thirteen, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Mr. Zine? No, we're just taking that up, but I will call that first one special for Mr. Zine. All right, we have items twenty-four through forty, colleagues. Next, Mr. Zine wanted twenty-seven to be called special.
Thirty-two and thirty-three.
Thirty-two and thirty-three. It's a bumper day for Mr. Zine. Mr. Reyes?
I'd like to receive and file P and Q, please.
P and Q of?
On thirty-four.
Thirty-four, okay. We will move that with that item. Mr. Parks?
Eight special.
Thirty-eight for Mr. Parks. And we have a card on twenty-four, so we -- and that's a commissioner, so let's hold that for both reasons.
Mr. President, item number twenty-five, the commissioner will not be present at this meeting.
Okay, well, we have a card from the public. We'll call that special. Twenty-six, we've had continued. And thirty, we have a card from the public as well, so we'll call that special. Thirty-one, we have a card from public, so we'll call that special. And thirty-four, we have a card from the public. Call that special as well as thirty-nine. Okay? Any other specials, colleagues? If not, on the balance, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next are closed session items.
Okay, let's hold those on the desk for a closed session. Next, if we can, is it now past ten fifteen? It is ten fifteen. If we can recess that meeting and please call the roll for the special meeting.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Wezar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, twelve members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
First order of business is an item forty-four, and that is an item for which public hearing has not been held.
Okay, we do not have any cards on that. We'll open and close that public hearing. Anybody wishing to call forty-four special from the council? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll on forty-four, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. We can return to the regular meeting and take up the continuation item, please.
Item number forty-five on the continuation agenda is a confirmation of a city official. Would you like to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold that on the desk as well. Okay. Does that finish the agenda?
That brings you to items called special.
Okay, let's return to public comment now. Arnold Sachs will be our first speaker. Following Arnold Sachs will be Michael Hunt and Matt Dowd. Mr. Sachs here? Oh, yeah, there you are. Good morning.
Good morning, City Council. Thank you very much. A few things I'd like to talk about very quickly, my public comment. Regarding the LAUSD payroll disaster, I think what should happen, they're hiring a consultant for nine-point-eight million dollars to help fix the mess. I think part of the fix should also be that the board members and the executives of the LAUSD not get paid until the payroll disaster is fixed. Tie their payroll, tie their plan to fix the payroll into their own actual pay. That's item number one. Item number two, the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power is going to be seeking a rate increase, and there was some remarks in the newspaper recently that they need to upgrade the infrastructure, that it's time to do this, that there hasn't been an infrastructure upgrade in fifteen years, there hasn't been a rate increase. And it would have been nice. The problem with the LADWP is that they have a credibility issue to overcome, that first they had problems paying for advertisements. There was a lawsuit filed by the city to collect over three-hundred, three million dollars from one of their advertisers. And then, one of the contract issues that they just passed is that their employees will get overtime, no matter what hours they work. If they take personal time off, they can re -- make that time up, being paid time and a half overtime. They should have taken care of their own housekeeping before they decided to come to the public to look for a rate increase. And number three, recently, there were some people in the city council chambers regarding some upgrades done in downtown LA for some low-income housing. Unfortunately, they missed the boat. It should have been looked at last week when the -- when the city council decided that to change the ordinance regarding housing sizes by lowering the sizing of apartments down to like three-hundred, four-hundred square feet.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs.
That's a new look for downtown LA. Thank you.
You're welcome. Michael Hunt is our next speaker. After that will be Matt Dowd.
I see you guys took our thing off the agenda again, and I want to talk about racial profiling, segregation, and what it means to us. It's been five-hundred-and-twenty-five days. The city denies that they're racial profiling against Africans-Americans. But I really want to take time to tell you that it is a true effort that we've been down here for five-hundred-and-twenty-five days, and we know, and I know, how it feels to be discriminated against, racial profiling, and all the other events that has happened to me with the forty-two fifteen. What really is going on is that they're trying to come up with a decision. A decision, you know, it brings me back to this. Once you've been there, you really know how it feel to be segregated and to be profiled against and to be racial profiled twenty-four times that you had your field day. We spent over almost five-hundred thousand dollars in this area trying to get it done, and it's still five-hundred-and-twenty-five days. You guys know how I feel. You guys know I hate it, you know? It's silly that it's, nothing's been done about it in this city, that the city council guy, whose district it is, has not done anything about this, you know? Five-hundred-and-twenty-five days of being discriminated against. My family, we've had a hard time. My daughter has had a hard time, and it's just all right, you know? And this is what the Robert Kennedy camp would do. Thank you.
If I can have the city attorney mention the reason why it was continued today, and you certainly have the right to wear that T-shirt and that speech is protected, but I would ask you as well, because I have the right to speak about it, if you could refrain from wearing words that we've had discussions in here that are offensive to some, you certainly have the right to do it, but I will reiterate each time that that is offensive to many members, not only of this council chambers, but of the public as well, so. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, item twenty-six was continued because the court date was continued, and the council will be seeking direction from the court on this matter.
Thank you. Matt Dowd is our next speaker.
Thank you. Yeah, let me clarify some things from this side, then. You know, the court is really inviting you to make some moves before it slam dunks you because, you know, I've been following this agenda item since August the seventh, and here's why we won. It's right here in the item. You've got a mistake even in this language right here. Forty-two fifteen prohibited vending of items that are inherently communicative and had more than nominal utility, but you've only got "have nominal utility." The nominal utility was okay. A CD was nominal utility. It didn't do anything else. So, there's a mistake in here from August the seventh that your attorneys haven't picked up, Mr. City Attorney. So, before you vote on it, you better fix that, too. But that's why it was vague, and what you're doing is you've got all these people out there on the beach right now, but you've still got Michael Hunt here banned from the whole of Venice under unconstitutional ordinance. Now, your attorneys should have told you that. On January sixteen, they're crying to the judge in court here going, "Oh, why don't you bring Santa Monica in here?" Because you're going to strike down our ordinance. Now, he said that. It's written in the transcript. So, the judge has said he's going to strike it down. Every day that you go on, don't complain that the price goes up with a five-hundred-dollar hour attorneys and everything. So, for Mr. Alarcon, too, if you don't know what's going on, you know, when that item does come on the agenda, I'll explain it.
Sir, if you could please address to the entire council.
Okay. And as far as affordable housing and everything in the city, what about all the unaffordable housing? What are we going to do with that? If you're going to pave paradise, put up some parking lots, too, huh?
Thank you. That will close our general public comment for today. We can go to items called special. Madam Clerk?
Item number eight is a reappointment of Mr. James Silkot to South Los Angeles Area Planning Commission.
Okay, Mr. Silkot here. I'd like to come forward, sir, to the table here and like to recognize from the chair of our Planning and Land Use Management Committee, Mr. Reyes. On number eight, Mr. Reyes, we have the commissioner from the South LA APC.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Silkot for his attentive and patience. Yesterday in committee, we had quite a long committee.
You're welcome.
And I want to thank you, not only because of the service you've had, been able to render us before in your previous capacity, but perhaps you should share with the council your role with the city before and your experience working with the council in the commission area.
Good morning, Councilman. I first started with the Area Planning Commission about twenty years ago in the Brad administration, and then I went to work for the zoning appeals board. Then after that, I got involved in the area planning. What happened was that the, it was changed from area planning, from zoning to area planning. But my main interest has always been working on the Wilshire Boulevard on the Cog Mile Agenda. We have, I think if you were to go west on Crenshaw to the museums, you'd see the buildings set back with landscaping and with areas so that one can visualize the buildings from a good, from a perspective of maybe twenty feet or so. And that, I think, is my best achievement.
Thank you, sir. And it's obvious through your resume as an architect, as a veteran of the Korean War, your public service has been outstanding. We're truly honored to have you with us today.
Thank you.
And for you to offer your services for this great city. And I would like to strongly encourage my colleagues to, for an high vote, so you can participate in the South LA Area Planning Commission as a commissioner. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Wesson is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I just want to rise to say that I've known Mr. Silkot for twenty years. When I was chief deputy for Councilman Holden, he was a public servant, serving on, I guess it was the zoning appeals or whatever it was. He is always, I mean, he is an expert in his field, and for the years that I've known him, you could always count on him to be fair and objective. He also has a longstanding relationship with Howard University. And when he would go back and visit, he would bring me something that was called a Jamaican bun, which was some of the best. It was a type of bread. Now, he alleges that this, the man that would make this baker died, but he refuses to bring me these buns. So, Mr. Silkot, I don't know if I'm going to be in a position to vote for you, so I instruct you, there's got to be more than just one Jamaican in the United States of America that makes these buns. But Jim is a very good man, a great athlete, and I haven't had a bun in years.
We'll get one for you next time, Councilman.
Make it two, please.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Any other colleagues wishing to be heard on the nomination? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations, Mr. Silkot, Commissioner. Welcome aboard. Next item, please.
Next is item number ten, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Okay, that has been clarified, so unless anybody else wants to be heard on that from the council, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Oh, I'm sorry, on eight, if we can send that forth with no objection. Next item, please.
Next is item number twenty, and that was called special by Councilmember Perry.
Okay, Ms. Perry?
I withdraw my request to call it special. I hope that we can just vote on it.
Okay. Nobody else wishes to be heard on twenty? Let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next is item number twenty-four, and that is the commission appointment, and that's the appointment of Mr. Luis Sanchez to the Board of Recreation and Parks Commissioner.
Okay, Mr. Sanchez, if you'd like to come forward to the table. We have one public speaker card. I think we'll take that at the outset. Mr. Labonge, and then we'll hear from Mr. Labonge, Matt Dowd, on item twenty-four.
Thank you, yes, very important appointment, this one, because, you know, this is the Board of Rec and Parks partly responsible for the guy wearing the T-shirt. Now, I just want to explain that there's problems right now of Venice Beach, you know, under your jurisdiction, and it's regarding all the vending that's happening down there. And all the case law says that it's tough to draw bright lines around the First Amendment, and this Board of Parks, Rec and Parks continually, they work on an old-school visual thing where they go, oh, they just look at something, but it's about speech. And until you guys understand that, that you have to put people, you have to provide ample space for them, and then if you've got a problem with what they're doing down there, you have to sue them individually, take them in front of a judge, and ask a judge to decide, is that communicative or not? Now, all the cases say that, and that's why I'm telling you this before, you know, you're in a position now to, you know, to do something constructive with this problem, and it's costing the city a lot of money. And it will continue to cost a lot of money if they just continue to bullock their way through this federal law, which is very plain and simple. You know, it's the Constitution. It's not vague. It's meant to be understood. You don't need these attorneys up here across the street confusing it and saying, "Oh, we can do this and we can do that." They're not right, and we proved that, and we'll prove it again. It's very simple. Provide reasonable time, place, and manner.
Sir, if you could bring it back to the commissioner appointment, please.
He's going on the board. He's going to make decisions in this. It's not on the agenda. I think that's fair.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Labonge is the chair of the Arts Parks.
Members, Mayor Ragosa has suggested and recommended an appointment of a young man who has great talents and skills, went to Loyola High School in Los Angeles, was one of the top students to graduate, attended UC Berkeley, where he got a degree at Berkeley, and then he's worked in various roles involved in engaging the community for the betterment of the community. But his most recent role is the most important role. He serves as chief of staff to the president of the Board of Education. And you know, we all share the feeling of joint use is a thing that time has come, and no time is better than now with the advent of all the hundreds of new schools and opportunities to have joint use. Members, I strongly recommend Luis Sanchez to the Board of Recreation Parks Commission and ask for your vote. Before I pass the microphone, Luis, if you'd like to say a few words and discuss your passion and how you see we can collaborate better between our schools, our parks, and your experience growing up in Los Angeles and what parks meant to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Labonge. Council President, council members, once again, my name is Luis Sanchez. I'm currently, in my current capacity, chief of staff to Board President Garcia, but previously to that, I was executive director of a nonprofit on the East Side for over eight years. I worked with youth and families, and I saw day in, day out, the importance of parks and recreation programs as an avenue for young people. And given the opportunity, young people will be successful. And if we build social capital, like successful recreation programs, or create open space either through joint use efforts or use our current space, we could really see a place where young people could be successful. We could really see, it could become a solution for public safety issues, for example, like city, parts of the city like the East Side or South Los Angeles. And I really feel that when young people are given the opportunity, young people are given a safe space, and young people are given programs that ensure their success, the city will be a better place.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanchez. We have two other council members who would like to ask you some questions or make some comments. Mr. Wezar, and then Mr. Cardenas, and then Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much, and I just want to fully support this nomination. I've known Mr. Sanchez from my days on the school board, when Mr. Sanchez headed up a group of parents and students from the East Side and South Los Angeles to organize, to pass what I think was one of my highlights as a school board member, the policy to require or have all students have access to the A-through-G requirements, those requirements that are necessary to gain access to a Cal State or UC campus in the state of California. It was through Mr. Sanchez's efforts in organizing thousands of parents and students that demanded for higher expectations for all our students, for more equity, that this was able to happen. So, I thank you for that, and I think that has shown your tremendous commitment and passion for improving the lives of children and Angelenos in the city of Los Angeles. And I think it's a great connection now to have you on this commission and also being at the school district as we continue to talk about the importance of... at the school district, as we continue to talk about the importance of aligning our services better to our young people, to our residents. We talk about it a lot, there's some work in that area, but I think you're there in the trenches making it happen, so I fully support this nomination. I want to thank you for the work you did on the A-3G campaign and the spark that that created for more reform and opportunities for children, and also now in your role here. My only question is, having been at the school board and seen how time-consuming that is, it's going to be a difficult balance, you've got large responsibilities on both ends, so we hope to support you and good luck on balancing the two rules.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wezar. Mr. Cardenas is next.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. I appreciate you donating your time like this. You're going to be busier than you probably know, but I'm sure you'll meet the challenge. But one thing that I hope that you can commit to, that I've been looking for the opportunity to get started on making sure that this department has a more forthright and appropriate and open bidding process. We have had some issues, we have had some hiccups, we have had some questionable experiences by some of the processes, and there have been some changes recently, so that's a good thing. But I think at the commission level, what we need is a commissioner to actually take that under their wing and out of a need and want to have fairness. I think it's important that someone at the commission level actually take an interest in it and make it one of their issues, that they're working with the department, and I am more than happy to assist in any way that I can and partner with you. And I'm looking forward to that opportunity. What do you think about that?
In my previous capacity, I've always been a believer in effective government, transparent government. In my previous capacity as a nonprofit leader, for my, the parents I worked with, the young people, it was always about access and about transparency. So, in this, now being on the other end and being part of a decision-making body, I feel it's really important that we involve all the stakeholders on one end, but two, that we have a transparent and open process for any bidding that happens at the city. And I feel the same way in my current capacity at the school board, that we also feel that there hasn't been an RFP process, and too many times it's about relationships as opposed to bringing the best talent in. So, I want to make sure that we continue the process I've been a part of in the past and make sure that's reflected in the commission.
So, are you committed to take that extra time necessary?
I will. Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Very impressive resume in all the different areas of work that you have experiences in, which leads me to my question. As you know, many of our inner-city parks have been infested by gang activity. We have the ability to coordinate, you have an incredible opportunity with the school board president.
Yeah.
The piece that I see missing is the county, the probation. In our neighborhoods, we know who are the gang members. The grandmother, the tia, the tio, they know which of their kids has strayed. On that block, you know where the drugs are being sold. Connecting the parks with an infrastructure is important. Do you see yourself being able to take it to another level and being able to bring in the county, working with our senior lead officer, so that parks can be safer? I mean, there's a level of penetration and productivity we have to take to create an environment where it's safe to go to our parks.
Yes.
Because a lot of our kids don't go to our parks because it is dangerous. You have a group of youngsters hanging out on that corner, where they take over the bathroom area, where they take over where equipment's at, and they don't let anyone pass. The employees are scared, and we pump all this money to our parks, but we can't use them. Can you speak to that whole dynamic? And I'm not asking to make a commitment.
Yeah.
I'm just going to come up with the answer right now. But I'm putting that on the table, because I think we need to be able to look at our resources differently and our little ability to, and our ability to coordinate. So, can you just address that in the most general way you can?
Yeah. I am definitely one committed to working with all the existing agencies. In my current capacity, one of the issues we have been working on is how could city, county, current nonprofits, business, community, and the district work together for improving joint use opportunities, improving more opportunities to young people? So, I feel that I've already been, we're doing that work, so how can I take the work I've been doing around organizing the county to become a stakeholder in the work at the school sites and transfer that over to our work at the parks? And for me, also, another multiple strategy is not only involving all the key stakeholders, but also I just feel that there's a community-building issue here, is we really need to ensure that our families take back our parks. And we need to allow more space, like is happening at MacArthur Park, where you have these festivals going on throughout the summer with, you know, the music shows that were going on. And part of it is, a lot of our families have been scared to go back to the park for years, even sometimes decades. So, part of it, we need to bring back our families. Because at the end of the day, adding a cop car here and adding an officer to the park will be helpful, right? But there's only so many officers per park. So, part of it is, how do we ensure our families come back to the parks? We create more recreational opportunities. And then also, we use the recreational opportunities, like it had happened, for example, in the Summer of Success in South L.A., when they created a certain time where actually crime went down, because they created recreational opportunities for those young people who had been involved in either gangs or in other extracurricular activities that would be considered illegal, should become involved in certain programming so that that becomes a channel and a different avenue to get out of the gang life. So, I think there's a multiple strategy, and it's something that I want to continue to learn about from meeting with different council members and also with different other agencies.
Well, I thank the Americans that we get commissioners who actually grow up, who live, who understand what happens in our communities. You'll get a different perspective as to what could be, and not treat these neighborhoods as throwaway neighborhoods. It's a last cause. So, I thank you for your hope, I thank you for your energy, and should you need a motion, I'm sure council, we saw together, it's ourselves and everyone else who have you been working closely, with you to get us to another level. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reyes.
And, Mr. Sanchez, thank you very much for putting yourself forward, and I would reiterate my colleague's support and very excited for your service considering your background in the community. So, we only have one step left, which is to make this official, so let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Welcome. Our next item, actually, Mr. Parks has asked for item 38 to be taken out of order. If there's no objection, colleagues, Mr. Parks has item 38 with some detectives who are here on that item, so without objection, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it being out of order. We have a couple of detectives here that are on the clock. Let me ask Detective Guzman to come up and also the, one of our victim's mothers. We have a reward motion coming forward involving death, a homicide, and then two seriously injured victims. And Detective Guzman, could you give us the circumstances, and then we'll ask the mother to make that a personal plea?
Thank you, City Councilman Parks, and thank you, City Council, for allowing me to address you. On December 23rd, 2006, Daniel Sivoda and William Landeros, and Daniel Landeros, were shot while working as security guards at Leonardo's nightclub. Dan Sivoda later died on July 23rd of this year. He held on but succumbed to his injuries. At this point, our investigation is stalled, and I'm asking the City Council to consider and pass a reward motion. I feel that this reward motion will assist us and will possibly motivate witnesses to come forward and give us that crucial information that could regenerate this investigation.
I'm Daniel Sivoda, wife, and I'm here for one reason, because I want justice for my husband. He was suffered seven months in ICU, and I've been having a very hard time, and I have a five-year-old boy, and he's been having a hard time, too. I want justice for who did this to my husband. I want these people on jail. It's too hard to me to be here, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. And colleagues, I'd ask the unanimous vote, and ask the public that, and this is somewhat unusual, seven months after the incident that the death occurred, but that we need to do whatever we can to assist South Bureau homicide. Detective Guzman, phone number 485-4341, in hopes we can bring this case to a conclusion.
Thank you, and thank you, ma'am, for your courage for being here as well. We appreciate you being here. If we can please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next is item number 25, and that's the commission reappointment of Kimberly Marto Emerson to the Board of Zoo Commissioners. Ms. Emerson is not available to attend this meeting.
Okay.
However, there are cards from the public.
All right, let me, we'll check with Mr. Labonge and see if he wants to continue that till she's here or take that up right now. Can you hold that on the desk, please? Next item.
Next is item number 27, and that was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine, item number 27 is before us.
Mr. President, 27 has been resolved along with 32 and 33. They've all been handled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
They've all taken care of.
All right. We like a happy ending to the story. With that, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please. Oh, on 25, do you want, the Commissioner nominee is not here today. Do you want to move it anyways, or do you want to wait till she's here? Okay. We do have a public speaker card. If we can take up 25, then. Mr. Dowd, if you'd like to come forward on item 25.
Mr. Labonge?
Could I ask that number 45, which is a continuation from yesterday, maybe go next? It's the Commissioner sitting here.
Sure, well, we can take that up next, without objection. Mr. Dowd?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Labonge, and Council President, yeah, this is an important one, too, the Board of Zoo Commissioners. A lot of public discontent over the last 18 months over things that happened at the zoo and the $40 million elephant exhibit, and, you know, at a time when the city could, you know, could be facing budget shortfalls, you know, these are the kind of things, you know, you've got to ask yourself, do you really need to have zoo elephants here at that kind of cost when you've got the incredible San Diego facility, you know, just down the freeway? So, I just want to take a minute to say there's a lot of public discontent. You can read it on the blogs, and it's out there in the community, so I want this Commissioner to take note of that, that the people are watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. That closes our public comment on that item. If we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved, and without objection, we will send that forthwith to the mayor, and item 24, if we can send that forthwith as well to the mayor, without objection. Item 45, if we can take that up next, without objection. Item 45, please.
Item 45 is a commission appointment of Mr. Luis Pegleci to the Commission on Children, Youth, and Their Families.
If we can ask the nominee to come forward, let you come here to the table, and I recognize Mr. Labonge as you approach. Mr. Labonge?
Yes, Mr. Pegleci is an educator, he's involved at Cal State University Northridge, he's involved in local education, and his contribution will be well needed on the Commission on Children, Youth, and Family. Ask for an i-vote.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
Commissioner, do you want to express your passion?
Well, my, good morning, council members, Mr. President. My passion is for children and education. I am very concerned with the ongoing education of youth in the city. We have a major dropout problem, as you know, which impacts the quality of life and the employment and the economics of the city. So, we need to be very aware of and develop strategies to help with the dropout problem, to make sure kids stay in school. Very concerned about the treatment of young boys in school and discipline problems and the fact that most of our delinquency and most of our truancy and most of our gang membership is with young men. Ironically, or I should say, not ironically, when we go to an elementary school, who do we see sitting on the bench who are punished for recess by young kindergarten boys most of the time? I think these type of issues need to be addressed, and we need to face up to some of the things that are not happening correctly in the public schools.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and we appreciate your work in this area, and I don't think there are any other members on the queue, so let's go ahead and prepare the roll on the nomination and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard. All right, with that, we can please go to the next item.
Next is item number 30, and that was called special by a card from the public.
Mr. Sax on item number 30. Let's take up 31 as well, if you want to, we'll take your public comment on both of those, item 30 and 31. Give you two minutes apiece on this.
Good morning, thank you very much. Very quickly, on item 30, which is the closure of the Harbor Freeway at the Adams Boulevard, I'd like to reiterate, this item was in the Transportation Committee meeting, and I'd like to reiterate that the exposition line is going to be closing Figaro Street at Exposition Boulevard to do some rerouting of utilities and underground pipelines. And I'd like to know that something is going to be done for, it doesn't say how far down Figaro Street they're going to be closing it, or up Figaro Street that's going to be closing it, and I'd like to know how Caltrans is going to impact, or what Caltrans is going to do to lessen the impact for the northbound carpool lane that exits onto Exposition Boulevard and then onto Figaro Street. I'd also like to point out also that right now there's a lawsuit going on at USC between a developer who wants to build some property at Figaro on Jefferson Boulevard, and was wondering if that's got anything to do with this construction that'll be going on to relocate these pipelines and utility lines underground. That work will be done by the exposition rail line. On item, that's what I have to say on 30. On 31, again, another lease agreement at an airport, this one between the Board of Airport Commissioners, I believe, or LAWA and Air Sources, and I go back to the lease agreement at LAX between otherwise taxicab supervision and a third party to lease airport property and the airport not getting any funding, and the city not receiving any funding for city property. It's just unheard of. There are amendments to this lease, there are amendments to that lease. When is the lease agreement that is in effect at LAWA going to be looked at and amended to look out for the public's interest? It's over $300,000 a year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, Mr. Sax, if you want to take up item 39, you're the sole speaker on that one, too, so we can take that one up right now as well.
Mr. Zine.
And, yes, Mr. Cardenas actually is on the queue before. Mr. Cardenas, did you want to speak on?
That one?
Okay, Mr. Labonge.
Just a point of clarification. On this particular project, it is on the Internet, I believe, and if we could direct people to the Internet or have an Internet computer like you have that Ask for Pat by the clerk's office, so you could see all that information, you want to come to the side, I could help you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Labonge, appreciate that. Item 39, if you'd like to just, Mr. Sax?
I need to get some information, so if you'd like to wait one second or just continue with your agenda, I have some information back where I was sitting.
Why don't we do 39, and then we'll take care of that in a second?
Do you take his one?
Please, if you'll take up item 39 right now, that's before us, and we'll make sure that that is provided. This is on the Department of Transportation Traffic Management Services. Mr. Sax? Oh, you're getting the information? And, Mr. Cardenas, did you want to speak on something else in the meantime? Okay, go ahead.
I'd just like to, is the third-party vendor here on item 31? Could you come forward, please, if you don't mind? I just want to clarify something. Now, this particular lease, subject lease, does this create revenue or continue revenue for LAWA or LA World Airports, the Van Nuys Airport? Yes, it does. Okay. Would this be considered an enhancement of revenue for the airport from previous, the previous lease? Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have from you. The reason why I wanted to point that out is because I just want to make it very, very clear to the public that even though in the past there have been some convolutions of old leases and even lease renewals, sometimes in cases of 10 to 12 years... of old leases and even lease renewals sometimes in cases of ten to twelve years, the bureaucracy hadn't gotten around to renegotiating the leases. I just want to make it very clear that on this particular lease, it is to benefit, it is a benefit to the public and to the Van Nuys Airport and our airport system. In addition to that, it's something that's been negotiated and something that's going to be beneficial to all parties. So thank you very much for helping me clarify that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Why don't we vote on those two, and then we'll take up thirty-nine. Open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. If we can send thirty-one forthwith, please. Without objection. Mr. Sacks on number thirty-nine?
Thank you again. Just some clarification, please, Mr. President. Item thirty-nine revolves from funds to the LADOT Trust Fund number eight forty and transfer of actual costs to the LADOT Fund number one hundred slash ninety-four account number ten ninety, salaries overtime. On yesterday's agenda, there was a similar item, also involving Trust Fund number eight forty and transfer to Fund, Transportation Fund number one hundred slash ninety-four account ten ninety, salaries overtime. On Friday, there's an agenda item for transfer of LADOT funds to the LAD Trust Fund eight forty, LADOT Fund number one hundred slash ninety-four overtime account number ten ninety. But in addition, there's an, an item added to this agenda item, miscellaneous deposit account number two-two-zero-zero. And I'm wondering, since all three of these similar agenda items, all three of these items are similar in their content of agenda, what exactly is miscellaneous deposit account number two-two-zero-zero? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. That's item thirty-nine. If we'll please, nobody wishes to be heard, go ahead and open the roll then. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Thirty-two and thirty-three, I think those questions have been answered. If we can take those two up, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay. Mr. Rosendahl would like number six reconsidered. Colleagues, if there's no objection, let's go ahead and open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is now before us. We have one speaker card. Do you want me to fill that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The gentlemen have just come here and they'd like to speak on the record, and if we could ask them to come forward, that'd be great.
Okay. Amir Shokryan, if you'd like to come forward. Good morning.
Right there at the microphone.
Just right there at the microphone.
Could we ask the clerk to read item six again, just to refresh the council's memory?
Sure. Adam Clark, item number six?
Item number six is a hearing of appeals or objection to Building and Safety Department report and confirmation of a lien for the cost barricading of all openings and graffiti abatement of the buildings and the cleaning and fencing at a lot at three-twenty-two South Fourth Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Shokryan?
Yes, I, I have to speak louder, I cannot hear anything.
If you could address the council now, we will take your testimony for two minutes on this item number six.
Okay. If I could speak on my father's behalf.
Okay. Will you just give us your name, sir?
Shram Shokryan.
Shram Shokryan, okay. Thank you.
All right. So there, there lien that's being placed on the property, we just find it unjust or a little bit unfair that these fees are being applied to us in the first place. We've been trying to do demolition on this property for quite a long time, and the palace that was previously there was a complete mess and needed to be torn down, or should have been torn down in the first place. And basically, we were told to put a fence around the property and to board it and to make it safe, so no transients would be able to get into the property itself. We had quickly replied and put up a fence, but we were never told a certain height requirement, and we were told that, well, from our usual experience, the height requirement would be against six feet, Beverly Hills, I guess, is six feet. So the city had already gone ahead and put up a fourteen-foot fence without our, you know, authorization or knowledge at all whatsoever, and we were, sent a bill from the city to, to take care of the matter. We also hired a contractor to try and do the demolition itself, so we could try and do this in a speedy, you know, in a speedy, swift way, and they failed to do what they were supposed to do, so we had gone in ourselves and acquired the correct permits and continued the demolition. So it's just, it's just a matter of it being a little bit unjust for the fact that even though we were swift and responsive to what the city required, it just was done with just misinformation, and we were just sent, you know, a bill to have it corrected.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. President, in light of the comments from the constituents, I want to continue this item for a week and get Building and Safety together with them and see if we can work this out if the council approves.
Without objection, we'll continue that then till the twenty-sixth of September, seeing none, that will be continued one week. Okay? Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next is item number thirty-four, and that was called special by a card from the public.
Okay. Arnold Sacks on item thirty-four and Matt Dowd. Okay, and Mr. Sacks, do you have one minute left?
Thank you very much, City Councilmembers. Again, special item, I call attention to the fact that the lease at the LAX between Otherwise Taxicab Supervision and a third party without the city's consent, with, with, I guess, the city's consent where the city is giving up twenty-seven thousand dollars a month, and I appreciate...
Sir, I think thirty-four is a special event?
Yeah, well, I think it should be listed as a special event, because the city is allocating thirty, twenty-seven thousand dollars.
We appreciate the, the opinion, but we need you to talk about the special events that are before us, if you can do that.
Well, I'm trying to bring a point that that should be listed as a special event on the city agenda.
Okay, so this third warning, that, that's actually out of order, not germane to these items, but we appreciate those opinions. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dowd is next?
Can I take his twelve seconds? How long do I have left, Mr. City Attorney?
You have two minutes, sir.
Two minutes, perfect. Okay, well, don't we all wish we heard those magic words we just heard from Bill Rosendahl Lynn last January twenty-five oh six? Wish we could continue this item one week and resolve it.
Sir, if you could talk about the public?
Yes, I will, actually.
We give people a lot of leeway here, if we could just ask them respectfully to put that forward.
Thank you, yeah, you know, I've got to take my one little tangent.
We have the special items before us. Thank you.
So anyway, there's no girls from Van Nuys today, I noticed, and this would have been one of their subjects, but I've noticed in the past that they actually hammer the wrong ones, they, they hammer all of these, but I see some good ones in there, but I see a couple of anomalies in these fee waivers today. Now, item B is the TV Guide Emmys After Party. Now, we've hit you on this one before with Zuma Dog and Jack Weiss and all that, and this one's working, it's reimburse the city. So the Emmys After Party reimburse the city, but that's the only one. And then I noticed further on down the list, the Dodgers, there's Dodger games. Now, these are okay, because a lot of people need help, there's traffic mitigation and there's, there's issues involving the crowds that go to these games, so that is a public consideration. But I noticed there are only five hundred dollars is the fees and costs absorbed by the city, and that's for numerous dates, only five hundred dollars. And yet, item N, we see one here, the El Grito two thousand seven is fifty thousand dollars. Now, I'd love someone to get up and explain how it's fifty thousand dollars for one of these fee waivers for a one-night function that's already occurred on September fifteenth, it's already happened, so what if we say no, but no, it's already fixed, they're going to say yes, just watch.
Thank you. That closes our public comment on this item. Anybody wishing to be heard from the council? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll on item thirty-four.
Mr. President, per Councilmember Reyes, item thirty-four, P and Q is received and filed.
That's correct. As was moved, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Next are the closed session items.
Okay. In accordance with California state law, we will now go into closed session. If we can ask folks to please clear the council chambers unless they are here for these legal matters, and any votes that we take that require public vote or announcement, we will do so as soon as we come back. So thank you for your patience, and we'll now be going into executive session. If we can please clear the...
...
When we read, when we read, I say we will see Tyler. Me as a man, I was a superstar in China. So the new food they are setting they work with our smile. We have to come again, I say we really have to shine. Go with your glaze, say we totally just nice. We have to do it good, I say what sugar and spice. Look, we're jelly, we're jelly, just nice. We are equal, my goodness, what is sugar and spice? Give me, give me, give me, give me.
Ah. 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 Ah.
Ação. Por me dar, conti. O que eu dentro da alma sinto. Se amor se mostra em meus lábios, que ela vai crer, que eu sempre me engano. Não quero, de verdade. Se o amor nascer está ação. Trê um fim como deste austera. Se me embora, o coração. Não vou ser nada, por isso. Se eu mantiro o meu. Seguro que eu vou ser feliz. Viver, viver, viver.
Welcome back to the Los Angeles City Council. We have concluded our executive session. Madam Clerk, first item.
First item is item number forty-one, and that is the case of Rachel Miller versus City of Los Angeles. The settlement is for $200,000, and Councilmember Parks would like to speak on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
I'd like to make a motion that two council files, the first one, oh-three, one-four, five-nine, a Zion Smith motion, and also, oh-five, oh-five, eight-nine, also a Zion Smith motion, be brought back to Budget and Finance Committee to review the department's efforts to prevent these types of hazards in the future.
Second.
Thank you, second by Mr. LeBonde. Madam Clerk, open the roll on the settlement, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you, that's the item's been approved. Next item?
Next is item number forty-two, and that is the case of Hofseth Fedenian versus City of Los Angeles. The proposed settlement amount is $1,150,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you could open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item is item number forty-three, and that is the case of James Jones versus City of Los Angeles. The city attorney will speak on this item.
Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Madam President. And the settlement in this one is for $75,000 in new money, less any permanent disability advances paid to applicant at the time of the award.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you could open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
That item's been approved. Next order of business.
That is, that's the ending of closed session, and we have motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Announcements, Mr. Parks.
Let me just ask thirty-eight forthwith.
I'm sorry, which item, sir?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
The reward motion.
Thirty-eight will go forthwith. Do we have announcements, colleagues? Do we have adjourning motions? If I could, I'm sorry, before we get adjourning motions, Mr. Garcetti.
I just wanted to announce this was Talk Like a Pirate Day. It's officially nationwide.
It's officially nationwide, Talk Like a Pirate Day.
Are you serious?
If we could ask everyone to please rise.
I wouldn't do the honors.
Thank you. Adjourning motions? Mr. Rosenthal.
Madam President, there'll be more details at the next council meeting, but one of my deputies, Jim Horowitz's sister just died about a half an hour ago, and he's rushing to the scene. I'll talk more about her next time. But I'd like to adjourn now in memory of Hillary Helen Bick. I was with her just a month ago at the veterans' property when her great-husband and son were involved in creating the Fisher House, which is a home for families of veterans that are being serviced in the hospital. And she was there, she was very ill, but she came to show pride and respect for both her husband, John, and her son, Tim. Hillary Helen Horan Bick was born seventy-eight years ago in Louisville, Kentucky, gently passed away from pancreatic cancer on August twenty-ninth. Hillary, loving, charming, sweet, and much-loved, was adored by all who knew her. After graduating from Stevens College in Columbia, Missouri, Hillary was a successful actress and appeared on the Ray Bloggers Show, in Dragnet, and in the New York City Theater. She came to Los Angeles in 1954 to audition for a part in a motion picture, Ethan Fromm. The movie didn't happen, but before returning to New York, she met John Bick at the opening of Fear Child's Restaurant on La Cienega. After a few months, Hillary left for Short Hills, New Jersey, to spend some time with her parents. John followed her there shortly thereafter. He proposed, she said yes, and they married amidst the plethora of flowers at Christ Church in Short Hills on June fifth, 1954. She was a docent at the Getty, president of WAIF and of the Garden Rakes, and is justly renowned for her exquisite gardens and for the design and decor of her home. She is survived and much missed by her husband, John, and three sons, Christopher, Timothy, and Jeremy. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting's now adjourned.